Okay, I call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
The plan for this site is quite straightforward and it's in a unique position where most of the town's primary service mains are under either Thirty-Ninth Avenue or run north-south through the development. That was done years ago where sanitary line was granted permission to go through this site. And as a result, it's quite easy to build the underground infrastructure that needs to happen for this site. Stormwater drainage, though the M.D. might disagree, has always been planned to go to the southeast corner of this site and drain through a natural drainage corridor. All the design and sizing of the stormwater management is at pre-development rates, which is in line with Alberta environment requirements. So this is theoretically discharging at the same rate the whole entire site would have discharged as it stands right now. Next slide, please. Phasing. So we have those kind of eighteen phases. That being said, there's a lot of flexibility in the A.S.P. to, you know, evolve different phases as needed, depending on what the town's looking for, what the market's doing. So we've got the first two phases, one being residential, the second being commercial, highway commercial. There could be some variability on that, depending what the demands are. So that phasing plan is meant to be kind of a more of a living document in that it'd be built out in that way, but the exact number of phases could evolve over time. We're proposing eighteen at this stage. Next slide, please. So redistricting, these are the formal land uses that are being asked for through the A.S.P. with the intent of a future subdivision. So you have your R1, single detached, your R4, multifamily, in two different locations, your C2, highway commercial, and then your I2, service industrial. It's important to highlight that that service industrial is really meant to be a highway commercial feel, and there's just a few uses in service industrial that you can't quite get in highway commercial. That's why it's been brought in. It allows, again, for more flexibility, but the term industrial's a little bit deceiving. It's more highway commercial. Next slide, please. And that is it. Any questions? Anything else you want me to hit on?
I have one. Just, I noticed there's a south entrance there that, right now, would be going into a field. Would proposals for the foreseeable future, that'd be just gated or something?
Yeah, either depending the aesthetic that evolution's going for, typically you would see it as the big kind of concrete barriers that you see. You could get more formal with a gate. We haven't the exact detail of what's happening there in terms of either a gate or concrete is up in the air, I guess, but it would be, yes, barricaded so people could not drive into the south property.
We've seen it before. Looks good.
Yeah, looks good, so. Are we ready to recess the public hearing if there's no other questions or concerns? Councilor Kettles moves to recess the public hearing. Question?
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of this logistically. From what Katie said, you need to recess it to a certain date.
Date.
You can't just recess it.
I would suggest the twelfth.
So moved by Councilor Kettles to recess the public hearing regarding bylaw number one seven eight one until August, the next regular meeting on August 12, 2024.
All in favor? Approved. Thank you. Next. Delegation of Clarison Skate Park Association. Lisa.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Does that work? Okay. Hi. I'm gonna try and do this without crying. So, um, you ready? Okay. So, um, met the other day, it, and Abe had said perhaps it would be a good idea to meet council and give everyone an update on the state of the skate park, which is complete. Anyway, I wasn't gonna be able to do this. It's done. It's there. Um, many thanks, much thanks to you guys. We couldn't have done it this year without your approval because we ran into some issues at the beginning. That pushed us through so that it wasn't gonna cost us another probably hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year to delay. So, sorry.
We tried to make her cry.
It's been a long road, and we're here. And so the town guys are just finishing up with some of the dirt works to make it kind of prettier, get some grass seeded, and get those kids out there as soon as possible. We did a final walkthrough and a completion certification with New Line, and their subcontractor was transitional, transition construction. And so those fellows were the ones that were out actually doing the build supervised by Jeff Craig, who works with New Line directly. And so we did the final walkthrough. There was some spalling found in a couple of spots in some of the flats on the park, easily rectified in conversation at length with Dylan, who was out here, kind of lead on the construction and concrete part of it. His reassurance in that the patches that they did for those spalling spots, they will hold, they will be just fine, we'll get the kids on this park, and there is a warranty, a one-year warranty on the work that, of everything that's out there. And so what it was decided after our initial walkthrough and talking with Dylan and Jace and Abe and the few of us that were there to go with the patchwork on the spalling, which was the only issue we saw, was some of the flaking in the concrete, they patched it, it looks really good. We're gonna get the skate park through the summer into the season, keep an eye on the spalling that was there, the patches, and look for any more deficiencies. Let's get the park wintered, get through the season, and by next April, New Line and Transition will come back, and they stand by their work. If there's any repair that needs to be done, if we want to see further fixing on the spalling areas, there's options that we can do at that point, and it'll be all under warranty. But the very, very minimal issues, these boys that were out here doing the work were just fantastic kids. And, yeah, now it's signage. Carolyn is gonna work on some signage, some more parking signs for the alleyway on the east side. We have a model of a user signage that I've taken from the Deer Run Skate Park in Calgary. Just got outlining, this is an unsupervised area. We recommend that you wear equipment, no motorized vehicles, no drugs, alcohol, watch for other users, be kind to everybody. We'll have the town logo on there, the town website and phone number, and the Clarison Skate Park website address as soon as we get that completed. It's soon. Yeah, just with information that everyone needs, kind of your standard, this is how this is gonna work, this is what we expect of you using the park, that kind of an idea. So that's in the works. And, yeah, the town guys are moving dirt and planting grass and putting a little asphalt path so we can get some, keep the impact to a minimum because it's still kind of a construction site. So they'll put a little asphalt path, as I understand, and try to keep the dust and dirt off the park itself until we get some of that grass grown. And, yeah, just moving forward and hoping to get the kids on the park by next Friday. The temporary fencing will come down, the stuff that was rented, and it'll be open. So are there any questions?
Thank you to Co-op for the grass donation.
Thank you, Co-op for grass, yes, exactly. Thank you so many, I can't even, my brain is...
Councilor Kettles? I'm so happy you guys got that done. That was a tremendous amount. Just a question, I guess, for the town. Do we have any video surveillance on that site, even kind of passively out the back door or anything?
I don't believe we do, no. We've got some surveillance around the grounds here, but I don't think it can catch anything.
I'm just saying, I guess this is, even if we don't really have much, or anything but much, would it hurt to say that this, on your signage, that this area is under video surveillance?
Yeah.
Would that be a problem? Would that be a concern? Would that detract away from usage? I guess I'll get your opinion.
I don't think it would detract, and I don't think it would be an actual untruth because we don't know what the neighbors have, if they have a Ring camera or something, which would make sense. If I owned a house along there, I'd probably wanna put a Ring camera up and see what's, just make sure.
I'm just not sure if that would be advantage maybe from just kind of mitigating some potential behavior or something, I don't know. Just a passing thought that I had.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all I got. Congratulations, I think it's great.
Yeah, I hope, I hope it gets used.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
No concerns, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, thank you, thank you.
See ya.
Bye.
Nope.
Nope, they're all good.
So I guess we're just putting this on hold?
Yeah, we should get a motion to table the bylaw readings to August, the August 12 council meeting.
I can make that motion.
Question? Moved by Councilor Meister to table second and third readings of bylaw number one seven eight one until the next regular meeting of council on August 12, 2024.
All in favor? Passed. Correspondents, Honorable Rick Mcgiver, Minister of Municipal Affairs, Abe?
Yeah, so this is a response from the Minister of Municipal Affairs to some correspondence that council issued to the minister back in May.
Do you guys want me to bring it up on the screen?
No.
Right here.
And that was just expressing concern about Bill 20, which has now passed, but it was now a passed bill by the province. The concerns from council were some of the amendments to the Local Authorities' Election Act, as well as some of the amendments proposed in Bill 20 to the Municipal Government Act. So some things required dealing with recalling of counselors, party politics in local elections, a number of other items that council and many municipalities throughout the province were concerned with at the time. So they have provided some background information for you in a response, an official response to your concerns.
Take for information, Correspondents, Alberta Municipalities, member engagement on Bill 20 regulations. Abe?
Yeah, so I guess just following up the correspondence from the minister, now that Bill 20 has passed, they have reached out to stakeholders to inquire about looking for engagement on the regulations for that, for that bill. And Alberta Municipalities is having a webinar to get feedback and solicitor feedback from municipalities. So there is some information on, date and time, Thursday, July 18th, from noon to 1:30. There is a link on there that you can click to register council. And they have also provided their draft positions on some of the items in Bill 20 that the province is seeking engagement on. Joint use planning agreements, some definition clarifications on government policy, on what public interest means. Yeah, any thoughts or comments from council on that?
Question?
Other than the comment of you should get your engagement done before you pass a law, no.
You think?
Makes sense.
Next, Correspondent, South Grove Regional Initiative Grants Advising Services. Abe?
Yeah, so one of the town's regional economic development initiatives, South Grove, has a grant advising initiative. And basically, this is just for council's information that they can, they can advise on available grants for communities, community groups as well. This invitation is open to administration, council, community groups. They will help, they won't fill out the grant applications, but they can definitely take time and talk to, again, a community group or an administration or a council about what grants might be available, what projects those groups are looking to do, and be a resource there.
Councilor Kettles?
Is there any process around this? Like if one of our community groups wanted to approach them, or, you know, do they go through us? Do they go through directly? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that we can just, I would say, let the community group know that, actually, Council Cutler has an answer for that.
So we're at the meeting in South Grove, they can literally phone Peter Crissell.
Excellent, they're happy to help.
Yep, they're happy to help, they're happy to talk to all the local groups and help them.
Perfect.
You can give out Peter's number, is what he said.
So pass that on to the groups and the boards that you sit on and let them know that service is available?
Just pass that.
Yep.
Just email it to...
Yeah, just email it to your boards.
All of them. Okay, Correspondents, Old Man River Regional Services Commission, new service opportunity, development processing and support. Abe?
So it looks like over the years, ORSC has had questions from participating municipalities about development officer services. And they do note in their correspondence that this is primarily for, aimed at municipalities whose CAOs are also doing development officer duties. That's where a lot of the inquiries come from, that's not the setup that we have here. Or if there's municipalities that are without a development officer for a period of time, that they could potentially offer this service. ORSC is looking into it. We are past the deadline for responding just due to the timing of our meetings and when we received this notification. But I did talk with our development officer, and she feels that we're well-covered and well-represented in any time when she is away. ORSC has always, in the past, been able to help out with any questions and helping us with development officer services. So administratively, we're forwarding this to you, but letting you know that we don't feel that it's a need for the town.
Thank you. Next, Correspondents, Pincher Creek Chamber of Commerce, Pincher Creek Parade. Abe?
So some correspondence from Pincher Creek Chamber of Commerce inviting council out to the parade. Frozen in Time is their theme, and council has actually already agreed to send the town float to this parade, so.
You, Correspondent, Southern Alberta Regional Victim Services Society, board recruitment. Abe?
So the victim services is being, becoming regionalized throughout the province, and in the process of doing that, they are looking for board memberships for their regional boards, board volunteers to sit on their regional boards and representation from communities. So they reached out to the town of Clarison to see if there would be any interested parties. They have some information on what's involved with being a board member. There's a recruitment standard there, so we're just forwarding this to the agenda to bring to your attention. Do you have any questions or thoughts on that, council?
Any recruit?
No, but I think we can put it on our website, can't we?
Yeah, we could share that.
I think we can share it on some of the, whatever.
I think strategically, though, we'd be, be very well-served to have some or a few people or somebody sit on this regional, you know, just because we, we've always been very strong in this area, and if we don't have somebody sitting at the table, I'm just a little worried we may get left out at some point.
We used to have members on this board, but I don't know if we do anymore.
On this board? I thought this was a new board.
Well...
Yeah, the victims, so, yeah, we always did.
Yeah, we always did.
But you gotta look at the requirements too, right?
Yeah.
They're pretty strict.
Yeah, they're pretty extensive.
Yeah, you know, can't be sitting on any other boards or any other victim services, and you can't work in the community-based or police-based organizations. But, yeah, I don't know if we can get it on our Clarison job thing or whatever, I'm looking for, on our Facebook or on our website, I don't know.
We can promote, we can connect with the recruiters and ask them if it's appropriate to share on the website, and then if they're, they give us the green light, then we can go ahead and do that.
Thank you. Request for decision, update to municipal library bylaws. Abe?
Yeah, so the public library is, falls under the, is it, sorry? I'm messing up my thing. Okay. So the public library does require the town to approve their bylaws, just where legislation and the way they're structured, their bylaws need the town's endorsement, approval. So they do have some updates. If you recall, we did, or rather, council did, update some bylaws last year. So just go through some of the updates I'm looking for here, council. Schedule B, the addition of no animals allowed in the library except trained service animals, looking to make that change. Again, on Schedule B, addition of procedures for dealing with disruptive behaviors. Schedule C, previously non-resident fees applied to people living in Nobleford and Waterton, but now they pay the same rates as other patrons of the Chinook Arch Libraries, so they're removed from the schedule. And Schedule C, block loans. So an assisted living facility, for example, could get one card for the facility and use it to check out books for any of their residents. They have provided highlighted, highlighted areas of their bylaws where there are suggesting You have any questions on that, council? We can get some answers for you. Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve that.
Councilor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Councilor Carlson to approve the bylaws of the town of Clarison Municipal Library as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, bench show 2024. Abe?
So the bench, bench show has previously requested that council cover the costs for the rental at the community center for their annual bench show, which happens during fair days. Council did approve it. However, we put the cost in the motion of the fees from last year, which were fifty five dollars short. And so we would, we are looking for a motion from council to approve the additional fifty five dollars for that rental.
I'm motion to approve that fifty five dollars.
Councilor Ross? Question?
Moved by Councilor Ross to donate an additional fifty five dollars to the Clarison and District Fair Days bench show to cover the full cost, full rental cost at the Clarison Community Center for the bench show during Fair Days 2024.
All in favor? Approved. Quest for decision, Centennial Park Campground Accessibility Grant. Abe?
So we are looking for a motion to apply for the Enabling Accessibility Fund for the purpose of enabling accessibility by the poor-in-place base and decree an accessible playground over at Centennial Park. That park upgrade is in the 2025 capital plan, and total project cost estimates to be a hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. So the town has applied, CFEP has been applied for already for fifty percent of the costs for that. So leaving the town responsible, if successful, for ninety-six thousand, approximately. And the Enabling Accessibility Fund will, potentially, if successful with that, will cover seventy-five percent of that ninety-six thousand. So I'm just looking for a motion to approve the application for the Enabling Accessibility
Councilor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Councilor Cutler to approve the application to the Enabling Accessibility Fund for the purpose of enabling accessibility by the poor-in-place base and accessible playground within Centennial Park, and to provide the required twenty-five percent matching funds.
All in favor? Approved.
Sorry, I should note that the Lions Club, it's in here, I should point out that the Lions Club has been partnering with the town to get the CFEP funding, and has been helpful in getting other funding as well from the community foundation for some of the swings, so.
Request for decision, Fair Days 2024. Abe?
So we have a request for some road closures this time of year. We usually shut down some streets in town to have a street fair and provide some accessibility for fairgoers. So we have a number of motions, I'll just kind of review them here, council, along with a couple of beer garden requests, beer garden approval requests as well. For the parade, we're requesting approval of the traditional, mostly traditional route for the parade. So road closure from fourth, at Highway 520 from Fourth Street West to Second Street West between the hours of 10:30 a.m. and 11:30 a.m. Prior to this, the staging will occur in Centennial Park. At the, staging at the Coach Pitch Ball Diamonds, that's on the far east. That's on the far east.
So, do you guys know where it is? So when you say?
Far east, so where we set up the world of whatever that field?
Yeah, where, where Canada Day was, yes.
More in behind the, the Ball Diamond and behind the Fire Hall there is the Coach Pitch.
Yes, this is what I'm trying to understand. So like the car show is in the Ball Diamonds?
The, the, the.
The car show is generally in the Ball Diamonds, right?
Yes, yes, yeah, right, like right west of the.
But the staging is going to be outside of the Ball Diamonds?
Staging for the parade route.
Will be outside of the Ball Diamonds? Or is it going to be in the Ball Diamonds too?
No, no, it, so what's the, what's the?
East.
Living, living.
Right. Parkside Manor.
Park, north, thanks, yes. North of Parkside Manor is where the staging for the parade will be.
Okay.
And then we're going to have some staging as well over on Third Street for some of the bigger.
And just kind of wheel away.
Yeah, it's pretty tight in there.
That's why I was, that's why I just couldn't vision it in my head how that was working.
The car, yeah, we've, we've gone over.
You guys got it all under control. I, I, I trust you.
Yeah. And the car show, you were asking about that as well, right? That's.
Well, I just wanted to see.
Actual spot.
Yeah, it's, it's in the Ball Diamond. I just wondered if the staging was happening in the Ball Diamonds, but you're, okay. Okay, sure. I like it.
Is it too tight coming back through the campground? I can't, you guys are all.
Oh, you still.
Is, is it too tight coming back through the campground with the, you know, like would there be, I don't know what a better route would be, but I don't know how you get back there.
On the return, you mean?
On the return, yeah.
We feel like we'll be able to manage it by getting enough people to disperse and, and collect them afterwards, so as who do stay.
So let as we go, it's our first one.
Yeah, first one, try it though.
It's good to have this conversation though, because parade routes are important and it's been that way for a long time and.
Changes.
Changes, difficult for a parade route, changes is difficult, so, even if it's mostly just the staging. So we do plan to have some people located at the old staging to say, not here, not this year, not anymore. So we've, we've got some plans in place to direct people accordingly. So in addition to that, for the parade, we've got Beer Gardens, requesting Beer Gardens for, let me just get it here, Such Drama to host a Beer Gardens at the museum on Friday, August ninth. And for the Clarison Art Society to host a Beer Gardens at Centennial Park on Sunday, August eleventh. And then closure of the actual street fair will be Forty-Ninth Ave West from the lane between Second Street West and First Street West, all the way to Third Street West, including the intersection at Second Street West. And that's on Saturday, August tenth.
And Abe, what's the purpose of that closure?
Street market.
Do you?
Festivities.
Yeah.
That's the, are they doing a drifting thing?
Isn't that, that's the next one?
Yeah, that, that's for the.
When they shut down between.
Like the library.
I'm worried about the drifting one. The other one I'm good with.
That's on the east, that's on the different.
Second Street East by UFA.
That's for the, that one's for the street fair. This is what we're talking about right now. And then approval of road closure on Second Street East, north of the UFA to Forty-seventh Avenue East, including the south end of Two-A Street. And that's on August tenth. From six to eight. So that's the one that you're interested in, Counsel Kettles? Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, concerns?
The only concern I want to add is the, as far as closing down Second Street, not to be the burden of, be the bummer or whatever, everybody knows that the Drift Club comes to town. It's well-known. The previous years, we've set restrictions out as far as safety barricades that we've said should be done. Nothing ever gets built or put up. Noise, we've had complaints from residents that I've told many residents that they're going to be following these hours. Their hours are never adhered to, so I am not in favor of having the Drift Club in town at all this year. I'm sure everybody knows where the Drift Club is out of town now. It's not new. It's been around, so I don't think that's something we need to have in town anymore.
Here, here, I concur.
Any other questions, concerns? Start with Motion One to Close Forty-Ninth Avenue West. Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to approve the closure of Forty-Ninth Avenue West from the lane between Second Street West and First Street West to Third Street West, including the intersection at Second Street West on Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four, from seven thirty AM to eleven PM, including the use of Amundson Park for Fair Days activities.
All in favor? Approved. Next motion, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four Clarison Parade Route, road closure of Fourth Street to Second Street West. Counselor Zimmer? All in favor? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to approve the twenty twenty-four Clarison Parade Route and Road Closure from Fourth Street West to Second Street West on Fifty-first Avenue between the hours of ten thirty AM and eleven thirty AM on Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to approve road closure on Second Street East, north of UFA to Forty-seventh Avenue East.
Make that motion.
Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to, to approve a road closure on Second Street East, north of UFA to Forty-seventh Avenue East, including the south end of Second Two-A Street East on August tenth, twenty twenty-four, for the Rocky Mountain Drift Club Drag Racing Demo, on the condition that excessive noise is to be restricted to between the hours of six PM and eight PM.
All in favor? Opposed?
Defeated.
Defeated. Motion to approve Such Drama's Beer Garden at the Museum Friday, August ninth, between five PM and eleven PM, and in Amundson Park. Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to approve Such Drama for a Beer Garden at the Clarison Museum on Friday, August ninth, twenty twenty-four, between five PM and eleven PM, and in Amundson Park on Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four, between eleven AM and four PM, on the condition that an application to the Alberta Liquor and Gaming Commission has been approved and is displayed at the event.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to approve the Clarison Art Society for a Beer Garden at Centennial Park, Sunday, August eleventh, between ten AM and four PM. Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to approve the Clarison Art Society for a Beer Garden at Centennial Park on Sunday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-four, between ten AM and four PM, on the condition that an application to, to the Alberta Liquor and Gaming Commission has been approved and is displayed at the event.
All in favor? Approved. Pardon?
Opposed.
All opposed. Okay. Financial Report, Statement of Operations, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Abe?
Yes, so just an up-to-date statement of operations for the, your information, council and the public's information. There was a request from council to get some of these items broken down as to provide greater clarity on some of the expenses and revenues that fall under some of these items. This particular one, in this particular statement, we've provided a schedule for administrative, general administrative revenue and administrative expenses for your information and some notes, some notes on what some of the line items, what goes into them.
So when I was reading through, I, am I missing a schedule? Where is that?
Go to the third page.
Yeah, just scroll down in the PDF.
I see notes. I see notes, but I don't see a schedule.
Well, that is the schedule.
That is the schedule, okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
So you got your revenue, general administration revenue, user fees and sales of goods, government transfers for operating, so all your different revenues that go, revenue sources that go into your general administration revenue. And then your expenses as well. And that's referenced from above in the first page, Counsel Cutler. If you go to the top page, that's general administration revenue, references to the schedule and breaks that down, and the expenses do the same. Does that make sense?
I think I know what he's trying to, like.
Yes, makes sense.
You see now?
I see it now, because now it's here, this is expenses, this is what's included in the administration expenses, this, perfect, got it. I was missing that part, I was just going to the notes.
I was going to the notes and looking for.
Gotcha, and now then they're all tagged, got it. Schedule one, wow, great job administration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are there any, we got a request for the administration expenses and revenues to get that broken down, because there are questions from the public about that. Are there any other, moving forward, any other specific lines from these income statements that you see regularly that you'd like us to break down or you have questions on for a future, future agenda?
I think that's a good start.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial report, please? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Information Brief, Strategic Plan Update. Abe?
Some information for council on some of the strategic plan priorities. Try to bring these back once every month or a couple of months for your information. Yeah, some, some, I guess, some things to highlight would be the community center up at the top on the first page, that is a new one. Administration held pre-tender meetings with the Community Center Association. That project is out for tender as we speak. Closes, I believe, at some point in August, and the project is scheduled to go ahead, the renovations to the lobby in early twenty twenty-five. Phase two of stormwater management, that project was put on hold last year, not completed, but should be picking up really quickly here and get completed in short order. That's one of council's focused priorities, as is communications engagement strategy. We're currently having public participation plans and engagement surveys on, on those items and trying to use that to inform communications engagement strategy. Second Street East construction, infrastructure upgrades are set to start this week.
Yesterday.
Yep, yeah, so. Any other questions? That's just a few of them.
When is the survey done?
Closes end of July, two weeks.
Okay.
So I checked last week and we had, I haven't checked in, in a little, few days here, but we had good initial response, so a hundred and fifty responses, so we want to keep pushing that and definitely get more than that, but yeah.
Okay, Information Brief, Council Committee Report.
What happened?
I was on holiday.
Don't let us down like that again.
I went to buy cheese, come on.
Brad, Brad, can you get us one of these?
Yeah, I don't know what all those pictures are about.
Thirteen million. Cold dollars, cold dollars. Went to their grand opening. Thirteen million dollars, of which half was donated.
Nice.
Good for them.
That is nice.
Yeah. Okay, Information Brief, Council Resolution Status. Abe?
Yeah, just resolutions from previous meetings, questions from council on that. A few, few in progress there.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the information items?
Motion.
Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Motion to go in camera, please. Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to go in camera at eight oh eight PM for the following items. A, advice from officials, Section twenty-four. B, advice from officials, Section twenty-four.
Camera off? Oh. All in favor? Approved. Camera off?
There.
Motion to come out of in camera, please. Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to come out of in camera at nine twenty PM.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson that the meeting adjourned at nine twenty-one PM.
All in favor? Approved. Camera off, please.